Yes.
I can't really see what you're doing.
I'm not sure if I can.
I'm just trying to watch.
What's wrong?
Why?
I got a little time.
I got a lot of water.
I didn't joke when you go back.
Alright, alright, sorry, I didn't try and listen. Look, make it better. Bro.
David, do you need water? I dropped three.
Do you have one?
No, I don't. I have two minutes to make it. I don't know. Yeah, I think so. We don't go to church.
Yeah, we've been there.
Well, we're not the first one.
Yeah.
You don't think they're all crazy.
It's shorter than it should be.
It's called theater, helping we have some money. And my mom.
So it's happening in the population.
Right. And with them here.
Someone was lucked out.
Time. Yep.
I start without the under, should I give him a couple more minutes?
He's just changing his clothes and he'll be here.
Okay.
Putting his Superman outfit on.
I was visualizing. I was like. Alright.
If you're in a hurry to get to the graduation, we can probably get started.
I don't think so.
Well, we have like three or four things before this.
Yeah, we can do the opening ceremony.
Just to start so you can get to your.
Oh, she'd forgive me if I didn't make it.
Oh, no, no, no.
I'm kidding. She never forgive me.
Janelle's coming up, she's, she's ready.
Calling to order, the Starwood City Council meeting on May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four. It is five oh-one P M. And we're grateful for you being out here tonight. And, um, we are opening our meeting tonight with Janelle Zajak. And she's going to give us an opening prayer of thought and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our Lord in heaven, please guide us tonight as we make decisions based on the, uh, the budget of our city and, uh, the decisions made of our city leaders, knowing that they will impact all of the citizens and residents of Paragon. Ensure that we, we go through the meeting with fellowship and good nature and be the meeting's kind. Amen.
Amen.
Good one.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Janelle.
Alright, do any of the council members have a declaration to make, a conflict with, with anything on the agenda that is tied to a personal interest?
No, me.
No, ma'am.
No.
No.
Alright, and now the time is yours for public comments. For those of you who are here, um, can just come to the microphone, state your name and state your public comment. Will Dan get here if any of the council want to state a positive or something? Because otherwise someone's gonna need to tell a joke.
Well, could we just go into the consent meeting and then go back?
Yeah, we could circle around.
Just do that.
Great idea. Okay, well, go to the consent meeting. These are usually things that are approved by one motion and are administrative in nature. So item six, seven, and eight.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent meeting item agendas six, seven, and eight.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And the opponent? Motion carries.
Yeah, happy to be here.
How does that young women's group or youth group like cleaning up out there at Meeks?
Oh, they loved it. They loved it, plus the, uh, high school seniors. They did unbelievable job in all the parks and, yeah, the girls liked it. They put all that PVC pipe that will fit in my truck, in the truck. And we actually were, were reusing it through one of the citizens. Took it all, so instead of filling up the landfill, it's gonna get reused for something.
Like that. Could you guys hear me? I just now realized my microphone wasn't on. Must talk loud because nobody said anything. Now, that's been really neat to watch. I think everyone's really appreciated you sharing those posts and letting people see what our youth is doing in our community.
Oh, yeah, it's a lot.
It's just a really good community building thing that you're doing. Appreciate it. Always good to see those kids.
Yes.
Brings confidence to the next generation. Always say, what's, what's our succession plan on that? We gotta be building that all the time.
We'll get the juniors coming in next. At least I beat Scott here.
Starting at five tonight, not six. Wanted to remind everyone.
So are you ready for my presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Good, because I'm ready to give it. And I promise, and I told Sharon earlier today, that this would be a quick and dirty budget report. Instead of forty-five minutes like last year with, I think I had like a hundred slides, we're, we're real quick. But we want to make sure that we give it sixteen slides.
Can I ask one thing, Dan?
Yeah.
Could you just put your hair off to the side because it doesn't look like you from this side of the room?
Which version of me? If I put my city, my, I always say, put my city manager hat on, you know?
Oh, that's better.
I always take that off, metaphorically speaking. Okay, so I cut out the update on the economy and how it affects heroin and I've cut out all that stuff. We're just gonna get right to the budget highlights. Um, one of the biggest things that of course the public is always wondering is whether we are planning on triggering truth in taxation and we are not planning on doing that this year. So no property tax increase this year. Um, revenue is w- the big, the big offset to all of the time we spend on expenses. Um, this year, um, I, I would've got a graph if I would've wanted to go a little bit longer. But revenues, we're seeing, um, of course, property tax revenues are stable. That's one of the good things about them, even though we don't really like property tax in general. At least it's really stable. Um, sales tax has been aggressively growing, of course, all the money that the, the Fed pumped into the economy. Um, and then all the inflation and everything has, we've had consistent growth since the twenty-twenty dip. Um, but we're seeing that starting to flatten with sales tax. Um, the KMC Gardner Institute, um, forecasted, um, for this upcoming year of taxable sales in the state of Utah, three point six percent. I wasn't quite that aggressive with our forecast because we're seeing it starting to flatten. So, um, I, I planned on a two percent sales tax growth. Sales tax represents about maybe thirty to forty percent of the general fund revenue. So it's a big factor and it does respond to the economy. So it's one we really keep an eye on. Um, if our revenues start to decline, then we have to be aggressive at cutting expenses, so. Um, so moderated that at two percent. Um, new growth in property tax is, um, is minimal. We don't have the final numbers yet from the county auditor, so we just used, um, last year's actual property tax amount. And that final amount will come in, will be a little different, but we can't, we can't, if, if, by law, when we increase property tax above what the county auditor tells us we're gonna get, that is technically what triggers truth in taxation. So we just have that set on last year's. Um, another factor that, uh, of revenue is building, um, building revenues, impact fees and things like that. That's really dependent on, um, if there's, how many lots are for sale and get built on and things like that. Um, we have a couple of subdivisions that are, that are out there in the wings, depending on whether they, um, subdivisions both inside city limits now currently and proposed annexations, which will definitely impact our, our, impact fees and building revenues. And we just don't know what's gonna happen with that. So I tried to be pretty conservative on those. Salaries and wages, everybody knows this one pretty well since we spent time on it in the last meeting. Um, we, we had pegged our, um, COLA consideration to U R S, Utah Retirement Systems. Um, this year, the recommendation was a four point one from them and they capped it at four. We ended up adopting a three point nine percent COLA. COLA stands for cost of living adjustment. That'll be an increase to our employees to try to keep up with inflation that they're feeling. Um, it's all semantics from there, whether you call that a raise or not, um, but that's to keep up with inflation and eroding of the dollar. Um, we, of course, in our last meeting, we elected to pick up via an additional point seven percent COLA for tier-two, non-public safety employees. And we elected to continue the pickup of the tier-two for public safety, um, at the, at the pickup rate. Um, year-over-year difference in budget, it looks like we're spending one point six million more than we did last year. And by last year, I mean the year we're currently in that ends here in Jan-, in June. The, the main reason for that isn't because we're spending a lot more money, um, of tax money or anything. It's, it's related to the grants. We have some pretty hefty grants going through. We have the whole water project, um, going through the budget this year. And that's in the neighborhood of three million. So that's, that's one of the reasons why we have a big year-over-year, um, change in our budget. Um, large capital projects, of course, I just mentioned, capital recharge, water, the water recharge project. It's also a diversion. It's a project to get, to pipe down to the, um, to the, uh, farmers there, um, where they take it out now. Um, we, I put it in the budget for three and a half million. Um, and, and that includes some other source of funding, whether that's loan proceeds, whether that's another grant. Um, we're hoping to keep the project at three million. We just don't know. Um, and we will definitely come back to the council before we go borrow money or do anything like that. So we have about two point seven five in grant money between us and the pumpers and we'll probably run it all through the city. We may not run all of that money through the city. But that's what's in the, in the budget for that. And again, the majority of that is grant funding. Um, the other money that we have is already in the fund because we got it last year and now it's being appropriated from fund balance. But the total project, we could spend up to three and a half million. If we do borrowing, we'll bring it to you. But that's what that project is and it's moving forward fast. We do not want to slow it up because we have to go and amend our budget. So that's why we put that full amount in there. Um, at the airport, we have a couple of projects that are going. This year, we'll be doing the, the master plan update for the airport. This will be an entire, um, this is a big deal. Um, our, our last time we did our, updated our master plan was quite some time ago. It still shows us wanting to grow the airport from a classification to the larger classification. We've abandoned that idea quite some time ago, but our master plan now needs to get updated to show all of that and, and talk about all of our future needs and things like that. Um, that is ninety-five percent grant funded. We only pay five percent of that three seventy. And then, of course, the taxiway rehab is a UDOT grant that'll pay ninety percent. That taxiway, of course, we did the main runway last year and the taxiway's got some major issues. We're hoping that all it is, is that, is a rehab. But there's some places where there's cracks in there and you can look down in and shout and it echoes back to you. It's, it's, and I'm, I'm kind of joking, but seriously, there's, there's some under excavation in there that's pretty scary, so. Hopefully, that's all it, but, but that's two hundred and eleven thousand was the estimate some time ago and, and our match of that is ten percent, so twenty-one thousand, which is sitting in our capital projects fund. Um, the master plan update will happen inside the general fund. Uh, library renovation, um, we hope to get this, um, through C I B. This will be, um, of course, something we'll have, bring to the council to get approved. We'll have to bring it, just even officially apply, but we put it in the budget. One of the things that they need to see is that you have it budgeted. We're hoping for a grant loan. We're gonna ask for more grant than loan, um, and we're hoping that that will go through. So that's in the budget as well. The last big ticket item, of course, is the, the bridge, the Main Street Bridge. And, um, we are, we will be doing the engineering this year in financial year, fiscal year twenty-five, with the construction playing out in fiscal year twenty-six, if all goes to plan. So we have a certain amount of money sitting there. It's our match, that we know those matched dollars are gonna have to get adjusted. Um, and we're gonna have to do some other work on that. That's a big one. Oh, I said the last big one, but it's not really it. Um, everybody knows about most of these because we talk about them a lot. Um, we will be, we will be splitting this between part this year and part next year as we are now starting to build the bike park and starting to build the pickleball courts. We put the whole grant funds in next year and the expenditures and whatever we do this year, we'll then reduce what happens next year because that's what happens when you're doing a summer project and your fiscal year ends at the end of June. It's kind of a pain, but, um, that's gonna be ongoing this year. Um, both of those are, those are our grant funds and that's what we're spending. We're not gonna be putting any of our city money into it, but we put a lot of labor and, um, our own sweat and tears and diesel fuel and, and guys' time and, and some gravel and things like that. But actual cash is all from the budget, I mean, the grants. So I'm not gonna say every one of these, but we are doing a million projects. Um, this was the year that we designated as everything all at once. A bunch of upgrades to the pool, new bucket truck for the, for the electrical department, uh, rock church. We're trying to get another grant. We have money sitting there that we'd like to get as matched dollars. Water distribution upgrades, um, substation upgrades. We're looking to get a used dump truck and a used forklift. Um, we have a million things we're doing in planning sphere that's all ongoing. Transportation master plan, storm drain, water impact, sewer impact, power impact, street impact analysis updates. Industrial park master plan, subdivision code update, engineering standards update, and on and on and on. I didn't list everything, but I listed most of the big things and I'm definitely willing to, to share more of these. Just trying to think of, oh, the engineering for new sewer treatment, that's a huge one. Um, parking lot maintenance, we're gonna get after, um, half, I, I got bids back. I never sent you guys an update. We got bids back. We figured we would do the, the, um, just the crack seal and, um, a, a seal coat and paint of the city hall and the, um, Heritage Park and the Lions Park, that little one there at the Lions Park, this year. And we'll do the Valentine Sports next year. But we will crack seal that this year. And it's about thirty thousand and that's what we'll do, all of that. And then next year, we'll do the seal coat on that big eighty thousand square foot one there. We're gonna lose our parking lots if we don't do some work on them, so. Bunch of smaller stuff there, um, but all really important. I'm willing to talk about any of those if you want. Other financial highlights, we're adding a sixth police officer. When I say adding, we're going back to having a sixth police officer. We used to have six, um, and there was some partial funding for K nine and that went away. And when we, when we went down to three officers and we switched chiefs, we tried to run it with five and we, we've just been running them really, really ragged. We do have a working chief, which is pretty rare, except for in really small towns. And Addy does a great job, but, um, we're, we're budgeting to add a sixth officer back into the mix. Um, of course, we've, we are, we are now in the process of collecting rap tax, municipal T R T taxes. That's nothing new, other than we are seeing those revenues come in. We haven't budgeted to spend anything from this. We will next year, after we have a year's worth of collection, have our new rap tax committee meet to actually start spending some of that rap tax money. But for now, we're just gonna be accumulating it. Um, of course, we have our new rec director. We're developing that. She's doing new programs. Uh, you may have seen some softball and different things like that. So we have that rec director program in development. And of course, the Chamber of Commerce appropriation was a, was an, was a highlight, was an interesting, um, thing. Not a huge dollar item, but it was a, a new add. Executive summary, I just took a whole bunch of bullet points and cranked them down to two. Everything all at once this year, we're doing it all. Um, most of, all of the big projects that we're doing, I'm happy to say are grant funded. Um, we're not appropriating a lot of general fund money. Um, but, um, we are definitely gonna be spending a lot of money and doing a lot of projects, most of them grant funded. And other than that, Paragon City is well managed and fiscally sound. Sixteen of, three of the slides were just nonsense slides. Is there any questions from the couns-, actually, no, this is a public hearing. That's my presentation for the public hearing. And we can turn it over to the public and I can answer any questions the public has.
Alright, so I need a motion from council to open the public hearing on the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget.
I move, to move, uh, to open the public hearing to receive comments regarding the tentative budget.
I second that.
For twenty-four, twenty-five.
I'll ta-, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Hearing no opposition, we will carry on. So for the public that are here, we invite you to come up and give your input. Um, just to read it out loud, it says, "The public hearing is to receive comments regarding the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. All interested persons in attendance shall be given an opportunity to be heard for or against the estimates of revenue and expenditures or any item thereof in the tentative budget of any fund." Alright, seeing no wiggle in the audience, um, do we do anything from a council perspective? Or do we just move on to close the public hearing?
Yeah, we'll actually a- approve it in the next, in the next one. Um, we'll also be needing to amend the current year budget before the end of the year. We'll probably do that, um, in June, maybe the second meeting of June. But we'll actually approve this next time. Um, and maybe I'll just point out, if we get the numbers from the county auditor between now and then, I will update the, um, the budget with that correct property tax number. It's not super critical, but anyways.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to close our public hearing.
I'll make a motion to clo- close our pu- public hearing for the tentative budget of fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, hearing no opposition, we will move forward. And I really, I wanted to just give a shout out to the Rees's. I told them that I'd put them later in the agenda. This isn't really that much later, so I appreciate you being able to come at this time. I'm glad to see you all here. So this is the Reese property zoning change. Do you wanna introduce that, Dan?
Yeah, so, um, the, uh, there's been a public hearing in Planning Commission. It's been noticed on their property. Um, we actually ended up noticing it twice that, um, the, the Rees's are here. Um, but, uh, they came in and did a, um, they would like to, to build some residential. Um, it was a surprise to them that it was the zoning that it is, which was, um, highway service zone, which is a, a commercial zone, but it's really designed for, um, businesses that, that cater to the traveling public. And, um, residential is not allowed in that zone. And so, um, they came in and asked if, if we would consider a zone change. Um, originally, it was considered and it was noticed as a R two. And then, um, upon further, um, discussion and consideration by planning and zoning and the Rees's, they thought it would be more appropriately zoned as R one. And so, um, we went ahead and, and re-noticed it as R one. Planning Commission looked at it and, um, made a favorable recommendation to amend that, um, the zoning map. Of course, to amend the zoning map is a legislative act to, to do a zone change. Um, I will bring up just really quickly, just so you're all on the same page, and I'm gonna do this really fast. Um, it is, here's the zoning map. It's right here where it's, um, it's surrounded on the east and on the south by residential. Um, this parcel right here, is it one parcel or is it two? It's these two parcels here on the east side of the block, between one hundred and two hundred east, um, just north of five hundred north. Five hundred and what would be six hundred north is six hundred north, when six hundred north goes through someday, right? Um, so this blue color that you can see on the map is, is a zone R one A. Um, everything that's the darker gray is zoned R one. And then this banana color is R two. So, um, R one, and, and then there is R one in this little area right here. This darker gray is R one and then this lighter gray is all industrial manufacturing. The red color, of course, is highway services. Um, one of the things that was considered by the Planning Commission is the fact that Parag-, the Paragona Highway on our UDOT plan is to bend the Paragona Highway and come in on seven hundred north so that it is a true T intersection, instead of this problematic intersection right here. Um, and it, and at that point, and that's on our regional list, the UDOT list, the COG list, to do that at some point, we get that funding. This will not be, this property won't be, um, next to highway service anymore. I'm guessing that's why it was zoned that way in the first place. We did, we did a lot of research to try to figure out when and change and what and couldn't find anything. But it will no longer be close to the Paragona Highway, um, at that point. And, um, they wanted it to be residential, R one, and Planning Commission said yes. So that's all the background, unless the Rees's would like to share something else or if you have questions for the Rees's, that's all I have to say about it.
Do you have any desire to do some public speaking today? To round out your day? No? Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion on the zone change requested by the Reese, um, property owners.
I move that we make the zone change concerning the Reese property to R one from its present zone status. And do we need the address?
Um, what we actually need to do, I will tell you the tax parcel number. That's parcels, that would be the best way to do it. Because that's the official designation. So the tax parcels are A is an alpha, zero three eight eight zero 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 one zero 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 zero.
I do.
I got it.
Okay, you repeated.
And A, well, he can just say what Dan said, but whatever. And A zero three eight eight followed by eight zeros, I'm not gonna say them all.
All eight zeros?
All eight zeros. Zero 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 dash zero 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 zero. Those are the two parcels that are under consideration.
Okay, I move that we approve the, uh, zone change for the Reese property, which the tax id-, or is it ID or tax?
Parcel number, parcel number.
Tax parcel number, tell me if this is right. A zero three eight eight zero zero one zero zero. And A zero three eight eight zero 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 zero.
I think you missed one zero, but yes.
Okay.
Better restart the whole motion.
Which one did I miss?
No, yeah, you missed the middle one.
Okay, uh, I move that we approve the Reese property zone change. Tax parcel, parcels, numbers, or parcel numbers, whatever. Uh, A zero three eight eight zero zero one zero zero zero. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
And then parcel number, A zero three eight eight zero- And then parcel number, A zero three eight eight, zero zero zero, zero zero zero.
You m- you missed two zeros. Keep going.
Add four. Add two more zeros.
Just say zero.
Two more zeros.
There's eight zeros.
Eight zeros?
Yeah, so just say zero zero.
Just say zero zero. The first one was zero zero, zero one, and the other is all zeros.
Just say zero three eight eight and eight zeros.
Or just say, as Dan has stated.
Three zeros, then one.
That, that's too many zeros.
You're not gonna have a problem finding these minutes.
Okay.
It's gonna be several.
We will. Okay. I make a motion.
Callie has the right, um, thing.
Callie's got it.
We got it.
You got it?
I second it.
Okay.
He seconded.
I second it.
You were faster, John.
Yeah, you have to say what it's going to.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, it didn't finish it.
Okay. I move that we change it for, to A, R one, from highway services, I think it is.
That's second that.
Is that good?
Yes. I think that's, did you second that? Seconded that?
Second, second that.
Dave seconded.
All right.
David Harris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. You don't have to stay. Totally up to you. Thank you. Um, we are now going to move to action item number ten. Um, this is the water ordinance to comply with the state turf buyback program. Um, this is basically the same language that we've had the water, um, board review and planning and zoning review. Uh, just to bring you back to center on it, Water Board chose to not comment. Planning and zoning made a recommendation to the council to approve it. I don't know if Larry wants to add anything to that. Do you want to say anything else? Okay. So, now it is up to the council to decide and vote on if you would like to make those changes to the water ordinance to comply with the state turf buyback program.
And let me just say real quick, 'cause we're, it's kind of, we're doing the little weird stuff. W- we are, we are amending the subdivision code, which is chapter fourteen, and basically saying that new, new development will follow the requirements in Parowan Municipal Code seven dot ten dot two ten, which is our water code where our conservation, where the rest of our conservation code is. So, we had to, this had to be land use, so we're amending that, and that's why it went to Planning Commission. The other is in our water code in chapter seven. So, we're actually would be amending two different sections of code. And the, and the three items specifically that there are are these three, which we've talked about quite a bit. Um, Water Board, just, just for the record, brought, they considered it twice and brought no recommendation. They chose to remain silent on it. They had some of their own, um, I don't wanna say political. They were considering, um, things that weren't really necessarily related to water. They were more related to property rights and the, the trade off between whether this was a good idea for the people who wanted to participate in the plan and property rights, which was not really the Water Board's deal in their arena. And so, they sat there and talked about it for an hour, and I said, "You guys are conflicted. Just don't send a recommendation if you're, if you're conflicted." They, they were really happy to step back. We didn't have to have a recommendation from them, but that's what happened in Water Board, um, just so you know.
Yes. Would you like to approach? Thank you.
Well, since we're being picky, let's put a comma in there after minimum, at a minimum.
There is a comma now. Oh, oh, there you go. I was looking at measures. All right. And this will be changed to ordinance, so it will be a roll call vote?
Unless there's discussion.
Unless there's discussion.
Well, I'm gonna have to make a comment, because I understand and appreciate people wanting to change and be compensated for their landscape. But as I understand, there's not that many people that have applied and want to do this. And this is a state mandate, so they're coming in and telling us that in order for us to pay, they're the ones paying the money. And for, in order for them to, to pay out on this, we have to comply and change our ordinances. And I do not think that those people that want to come in later and put in some, whatever landscaping they choose, should have to comply with a restricted code, because they don't want to put in some type of a water-saving landscape. So, I, I just think that th- there's other ways that the city could consider maybe helping people to accomplish, you know, changing their landscaping through the, you know, a water conservancy-type landscaping without having to follow a state mandate. So, that's my position.
Good input. Thank you. I think we're ready to vote. Okay. If there are no other thoughts about this, then just a motion, and then we'll do a second and then a roll call.
Do I have to say those two?
Mm-hmm.
I motion to approve, oh, they moved it.
You would ju- re- just, you would, if you're gonna do that, you'd just say the top part.
Okay, thank you.
Adopt ordinance number and so forth.
Yeah. I propose to approve ordinance number two zero two four dash zero eight, ordinance governing water conservation requirements and restrictions on new development within city limits. Ordinance dated May twenty third, two thousand twenty four.
Do we have a second? In that case, your motion dies. No, nothing personal. Sometimes motions can die. Um, in that case, do we have another motion? All right. Do we not vote, or do we vote no?
Well, I mean, you can, you can make a motion that we don't adopt it, or it can die for lack of a...
Oh, we can do that.
But if that's what, I mean, let's not go out of here unless we kinda know that the intent is to not pass it, then we'll throw it in the trash.
Okay. So, I make a motion to not approve ordinance number twenty twenty four dash zero eight and ordinance governing water conservation requirements and restrictions on new development within city limits. Ordinance dated twenty twenty three, twenty four.
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor, and we'll start with Councilmember Burton.
David Burton, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
John Dean, nay.
Dave Harris, aye.
Rochelle Topham, aye.
All right. So, with the four to one, that motion carries. Thank you.
So, is there, just as a follow up on that, um... Do we want to have, do we wanna entertain some conservation stuff? Did Councilman Burton mentioned there's stuff that the city can do. Is there anything that we wanna have Water Board look at, work on?
Some kind of incentive program. I kind of think we do have our tier structure, but we could...
I think so, from a city perspective.
Not a state mandated.
Right. And somehow, I just don't wanna penalize people in future developments that, you know, that are restricted, you know.
So, do we wanna do something that's more along the lines of an incentive rather than a, something that would force?
Something, I mean...
You know what I mean? Is there any, is there any guidelines, guardrails that the council thinks maybe would be great? Um, the nice thing about the thing that we didn't pass, and I'm not saying you should've passed it, is that state money funds it. So, if we do any incentives, obviously, we have to fund it. And our water, our water department, our water company is not exactly rife with cash. It's okay. But, you know, we, we frankly need to look at the rate sometime in the next year or two. Um, so, there may not be a, a cash incentive, but maybe we could do something with rates, that there's an incentive if somebody wanted to. Not zero scape. They call it now a water-wise landscape, that they could, if they use very little water, maybe we, as we look at our rate schedule, that we could give them an incentive to do that, that, you know, if you use under so many gallons, you pay a, a better rate. So, really kind of, of course, you have to make it up on the other end, or, you know, whatever. I don't know.
And I think there was discussion about that with Water Board at that time, you know, doing some kind of conservation tier. And I don't, I think we just kind of dealt with the task at hand at that time, but I think it'd be worth putting on an agenda, probably the next upcoming Water Board agenda, and then we could revisit it.
Right. I think we just need to discuss it and see what options there are and...
So, some things that, like Washington County did a program where they actually do a different impact fee. If that property is okay recording something that, that they will be, they will pay a reduced fee, but they will also have a different billing tier. Um, and if they use what water a normal yard would use, then they, they get billed heavily. But they didn't have to pay as much as an impact fee, because they're not gonna impact the system as much. Like, there's ways that you can do it, and you, it's all voluntary, if somebody wanted to participate or not. We could explore something like that, too. Which wouldn't hurt, wouldn't financially hurt the city, i- i- and would allow them to conserve.
And I think there'd be some that would have pride in being part of that conservation tier. And I think it would be a good conversation to have when people approach us with subdivision, you know, questions. And we could say, "We do have a water conservation tier. If you're interested..."
We do wanna, we wanna encourage conservation. We just, I'm, what I'm hearing from the councils, we didn't wanna mandate something. Yep.
Well, I just didn't feel that there were enough individuals that have made, uh, uh, requests for such, and you were penalizing the majority in the future.
And the other thing is when we do, if we end up with groundwater management conversation with the state engineer, you know, to say we didn't do this, we need to have what we did do instead.
Right.
We have that prepared, so we don't not have an answer for that, because I think we do need to have a reason we didn't and what we did instead. I think that would be important.
We need to show we're trying.
Right.
Well, we are. We've got a multimillion-dollar water recharge project. I mean, what, I mean, that's a big statement.
And we have penalties for over, if you wanna do it.
Yeah.
People who use higher tier, higher than water use.
You've, you've implemented a tier process, and so, I don't think we can be accused of not doing anything, so... But I agree. We need to address this and see what we can do that applies to this specifically.
Right. And that's not telling people what they can and can't do with their property. They can volunteer to do it or not. Um, and no, I hope planning and zoning doesn't take offense that we didn't pass that, because I know you guys work so hard and do, you guys do so much. And so, we are very grateful and appreciative of everything that you guys do, just to let you know that. All right. That was a, a good discussion. I appreciate the council for taking time to, to consider that completely. Um, all right. Now, we are going to move to item number eleven. This is the Pioneer Heritage Production. So, no, Justin Osman is not back. Someone says, "He coming back?" I'm like, "No, he's not coming back." But he keeps, like, you know, good people do whatever, great at their follow-up. He keeps following up and just saying, "Is Parowan City interested in, you know, being in the program?", things like that. And so, I sent that out to the council again this week, just because their program is closing, and if we're not gonna be in it, we need to say we're not gonna be in it. And I did, at the Utah League of Cities and Towns meeting last night, kinda put Rob Dodson on the spot and say, "How much did you guys donate actually?" And he said, "Ten thousand", and I was like, "Wow, okay." But then I got clarification on that, so it is a little bit different, because what he did is they had ten thousand dollars toward their firework program on the twenty fourth, and they realized with such a big production free, you know, there at the Coliseum, I call it the Coliseum, um, that they would just give their ten thousand to that, because that would be a, a great experience for people to all just go there and, and be together on that, at that twenty fourth of July celebration. And so, that's, they didn't have to do any budget adjustments or anything. They just used their budgeted firework money and donated that to the Olive Osmond Hearing Fund. So, with that being said, um, we need to talk about this. And it's, I think, you know, everyone's kind of been thinking about it. We wondered, you know, if we should or would do anything, if this is something that would set precedents for precedent, precedent, for future, like, you know, now people think they can just come to the city and ask for a donation. You know, that's a real concern. I know when I was talking to, um, we were talking to the Gail Miller Foundation, and they said, "If we did award you, it couldn't be to Parowan City, because then every city would be asking us for something. It would have to be for an organization that was a, a step away from the city." So, I, I get, you know, the thought process around that. But with that being said, I would just like to open the discussion to the council to get your input on this. And anyone who wants to talk can talk. We don't need to go and order anything, but I'd really like to hear from each one of you.
I really don't know what to do. I mean, yeah, I don't.
Yeah, I think it opens up a door that is n- not one we wanna open, so...
Well, it may open up a door, but it's a door we need to address, because we have some things that, we need to have a discretionary line or a, a line item, because there are times when, like, Little Salt Lake Service Club puts the flags, does the Easter thing. They come begging for two hundred dollars. We can't do it. We can, till we go through a, you know, some process. And, you know, and there's several instances like that, that people that are contributing to the community. And this is a representation of our community. It's a history, and it's showing homage to our ancestors and our community as a mother town. And if we don't support it and show representation, I mean, people are not gonna have, think that we think anything of our co- custom, our culture, our history, our heritage. I mean, this, or people, I don't know how many thousands of people will be there, but they'll be able to view this, and maybe it'll spark interest in a few to come and investigate our history and to go and, you know, look at a few things or whatever. And at least they know that we have, w- we, we have a little integrity. I mean, we have pride. And, and I just think we need to really consider having, I mean, right now, we're discussing, you know, contributing to this in some way. But I think it's, it's more broad. We need to look at having a mechanism to be able to address this as a discretionary line item. I really do, because it comes up, and how, I, I've got some ideas, and that's not for tonight. But this, I really think we need to seriously consider the impact, because they're moving this from Saint George to Cedar City. And so, you're gonna have quite a, you know, you're gonna have more opportunity of people being closer to kinda, you know, recognize Parowan and its, its role in being the mother town of southern Utah. And we need to maintain that, and we need to protect that and preserve that. And we need to advertise it for, uh, any other description as far as, um, we need to make sure that everybody's aware of it, of what, who we are and what we are, 'cause we are unique, and we need to, to protect those, that custom and culture and traditions. It's very important. And I know you can set and, but if we can contribute monies to the Chamber of Commerce and things, I mean, this gives us exposure in the same way that that does. It does. This is a major event, a major event, and we need to be a player in that event.
And I second what David just said.
Well, like, do you guys have, like, a dollar amount? Like, I'm on the fence. Like, I don't. Like, what are we thinking that we probably would be able to contribute?
My thought is five thousand. That's my thought.
Is there any way we can combine our fireworks with Enix?
No, they, they don't need, that's what I was thinking, is there a way we can just give more fireworks? And I actually asked that question after the last event, and they said no. They, they don't need actual fireworks. They need money.
'Cause Enix is basically doing away with their, their fireworks organization.
Enix took...
And they, but they had started earlier before. Like, I asked, "Could we donate some fireworks to this?", and he said, "No, unfortunately, we've already got the fireworks."
But that's what they're doing, is putting their fireworks to, they're still having dollar fireworks.
No, no. Their money, their money. They took their money that they were going to spend on fireworks and gave that money to them.
They just moved it.
They're not having a fireworks show.
Right. Enix is not.
Okay.
They're encouraging people to go to that.
They elected basically to have that as their fireworks show.
But they're closer to Cedar than we are.
Right.
So I think we need to keep our fireworks.
Well, that was just a suggestion, I mean, just something.
But I, I think the, just the, the look for Parowan would, would draw people here. Just explaining about Parowan, it's just another way to advertise, if you want to say, the city.
But in the same content, if they're going to mention this and bring us into their, their pro- program and pageant.
What was, what was the, other than saying Parowan is the mother town, what was the, they actually going to do involving Parowan?
They did few production changes, and actually had their producers and directors recreate something, some story around the mother town. Because I was like, you cannot leave that off, like, you can't talk about Southern Utah and leave that off. And then the other thing is they, I brought Sandra Benson and Steve Decker in to try to figure out another good story. And they ended up doing the quilt walk, the rescue story, just because that could be done so, so beautifully on stage. So they added and changed their production for us based on our input. They were going to do, um, our first Olympic athlete story, they were going to try to do that, but they couldn't pull it off this year. But that was another one that I said would be really good, if they ended up doing changes, you know, for the following year. They believe they'll get this for five years at least, um, they believe this will be the future location for, for at least, you know, the coming years. And the other thing is that, wow, it will have veterans things and indigenous people, it'll be a historical representation of Southern Utah in music and dance, hundred plus kids. I mean, I was thinking a lot about how, when I was a kid, the kind of things that made an impression on me. And a lot of these young parents and young families, they don't have exposure to any of that history or information unless they seek it out, unless they go read a book. And so they're going to see things, I think, that they would otherwise not know about and not feel, um, I guess gratitude. Uh, just the emotions and feelings that, that tie us so closely to Parowan, that would give an opportunity to tie so many more people and generations to Parowan. That I don't think have other ways they'd be exposed to it.
We can't lose that, we can't afford to lose our history, we can't.
I think it's a win-win myself.
And if it's going to be an ongoing production, and it's going to represent Parowan, we need to participate.
And even just a little write-up in their program with our city logo, I mean, some people might say, well, no one's going to notice that. People sit there and they read the programs, and I do think if other cities are there and Parowan's not there, I'd like to see a little write-up and a logo for Parowan.
Do we know what dollar amount that could take to get you there?
No.
Half a page ad is, in the event program is twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, you have dollar amounts there.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, and the diamond is a three-quarter page audio mention, social media recognition, logo and event is five thousand.
Logo on the event shirts.
Yeah. And then the one that Cedar City did was audio and video mention throughout the show, full-page ad and event program booklet, uh, event banners, posters, flyers, uh, social media recognition logo, VIP premium, city meet and greet opportunities with guests. So, um, because this is ongoing, just like the chamber, we could start at a gold sponsor. And then if, if we see great value in it, it sounds like we're going to see it, is add a little bit each year. Add it from twenty-five, twenty-five hundred to five thousand, then who knows, you know, we might not meet the ten thousand that Cedar does, but, that's just my suggestion.
Have they set any other way of contributing other than this, gold, whatever?
Means to have money?
Well, anything, I mean.
I don't think with this short of notice, we could ask about it for the next, for the next one.
Yeah. So they just break it down like the gold, silver, bronze, whatever?
Yeah, it's pioneer sponsor, community sponsor, gold sponsor, diamond sponsor, platinum sponsor, fireworks sponsor, and then presenting sponsor, fifty grand.
So do you have input other than just kind of talking about?
I would, I would say, I would say, you know, start out in gold sponsor with the half-page ad and, for twenty-five hundred, and then move it up, bump it up the following year, and then see where that goes, that's just my suggestion, instead of.
So Dan, from a budgetary perspective, I mean, do we even have anything like that, or would that need to be an effort, um, in another direction, fundraising or otherwise?
Um, so we have non-departmental department, where we, it's kind of a catch-all, where we have stuff that doesn't really belong to anything. We, that's where we have password byway, some small tiny budget for city historians, um, rock church, Heritage Foundation, we have a line item. We have, we, we have a community choir, five hundred bucks for the community choir, that's where we're putting Chamber of Commerce, seventy-five hundred. Um, so there is just a sundry items, if it's not something that's going to be ongoing, I wouldn't say we create a new line item for it. Um, but if it is going to be ongoing, then, and it's, depending on the, depending on how much it is, probably better to have its own line item. If it's, if it's not a big amount, we probably wouldn't want to have that ongoing. Um, to Dave's point, to Councilman Burton's point, he'd be, be better about that. Um, we could have, I mean, I mean, next month you'll have another request from something else, and the next month you'll have another request. Um, so to have something, um, and it's hard to say this is worthy and that isn't worthy, because usually they're, they usually make a good argument. You add a limited amount, of course, you get into this weird area when you start just giving money to, you know, entities, that's not really a government thing. That, that gets kind of weird, um, you, you could, you know, the other thing is, you can call this, you know, events, you know, we do advertising and stuff like that. But that's Jet's budget, you know, I don't know if you put some money into her budget on advertising and say, you have to spend it here.
But don't take her money away, or she'll be in here.
Um, if you take away the money that she's planning on using, then, you know, that, that's the other place where this could be. Um, special celebrations, um, we have a three thousand dollar for special celebrations, and we have a, um, advertising line item in there. Um, which we get money from Maria to spend there, and we got more money this year, um, Jet fights hard for to get money from, sorry, from the county tourism. Um, but you could augment one of those budgets, but say this is where that needs to go, is that, if, you know, I don't know. It's kind of hard to figure spending money on a special event that isn't inside Parowan, so that's kind of weird there too, but.
Well, is there any way? Is there any way that we can have a discretionary line item?
So you could, but you really need to define it other than, you can't just call it a slush, you know, it would have to be like community, something or other. You know what I mean, it could be discretionary, but for nonprofit, community events or something like that. And the advantage of that is if somebody comes in and asks for fifty bucks, and you're like, we don't have a line item for that at all, and it fits in that area, then you could do something like that, but.
Well, that's what I was saying, to use discretion to determine, you know, what it really does fit and what we should be contributing to the city.
One advantage to that is when it's gone, it's gone.
Yeah.
That gives you a, that gives you a ceiling on it or a limit to it. Um, the disadvantage is, is you're going to, you know, you plan on spending it, but.
Scott Legal, contributing to nonprofit organizations, we were counseled about not doing that.
I don't know why.
Well, it was our previous attorney.
Well, he was smarter than me, so maybe we better not do it. No, I, I, I think you can contribute, can contribute.
Microphone.
Nonprofit.
Thank you.
I think that the expenditure of funds would depend upon the nature of the, uh, production. And in this case, if you determine that it's related to any of the categories you've discussed, I don't think it violates, um, state law, city ordinance, to contribute to a celebration regarding the heritage of Parowan City and Iron County. Um, I think Dan's correct in that usually it's not put on by an NGO or a non-government organization. But I would opine that it, they're quasi-government in that it's not, it's not, they're not selling cars, and they're not. I mean, it's about the heritage of this county and the heritage of, of this mother town. And so it's, it's a, it's a lot of, uh, endeavor. Uh, Dan will recall, we can get into trouble is, uh, a few years ago, sponsoring of a partisan Republican, uh, Republican event that governments contributed to heavily to bring in, I, I can't remember, was it Daryl Worley?
Yeah.
Um, that.
Was a whole fund created in the county's fund budget?
Holy moly, that one, I would probably say, you know, you can't do that, whether.
Before I was there, by the way, before I.
I heard you were all over it, I heard you're the one, you and the former attorney said, go ahead, because you like Daryl Worley, that's what I heard.
So in re-
I think we're okay.
In researching websites, because we've been looking at tools and trying to better understand what we have and what we could do with the website that we have, I did notice other cities have request donation buttons. Um, and what I was, I mean, it, just again, if, if it could be scripted, it's something that we're, you know, we're hammering out right now. But if it were a certain amount, let's just say it was twenty-five hundred dollars, and it was just every year, if it was something that was community building, fit into the category of our community character, um, you could even call it, like you said, advertising branding of Parowan, um, you know, development of, um, recognition of heritage. I mean, basically, when you were reading those things, I mean, maybe it would go in the heritage line item, but I don't know if that would make sense, because that would be too specific to this one. But if it were just a general discretionary, then we could take requests throughout the year, and just like this time of year, every year, because it is kind of the end of the budget, and that way we would know, you know, do we cut it this year, or do we keep it open? Um, then if people applied, we could make a decision how we use that twenty-five hundred dollars that year. I mean, I don't know if that's a possibility, I don't think we just leave it carte blanche, when anyone could just come and ask for money, and then we go, well, we give them money, we don't give them money. But it could be almost like, you know, not to compare it too closely, but the RAP committee, you hear the request, and then you make a decision with that little discretionary amount. And meanwhile, when you're, you know, working about the community, I have people often say, what can I do to help? And, you know, that can be an option, as you could donate toward, you know, this, this, or this, because a lot of people do really want to continue to build that heritage piece for Parowan. And it's something that we know we're okay right now, but where are we going to be in twenty years? And I do think it's important that our, our upcoming generations are exposed to this information, because it changes their sense of place and their sense of self. As you can tell, I'm kind of about it, because otherwise, they don't know. I mean, we have our, our Veterans Assembly, and we have these things that everybody just goes, oh, that just feels good. To me, this is another thing that just brings us all kind of to that place that we hope the upcoming generation, you know, has gratitude for. And I don't know how else it happens.
We have to preserve our past and our heritage, because Parowan is what it is today, is because of what it was and what it always has been. And we're unique, and we've got to preserve it, and if we, whatever we can do to bring that to light, like in this instance, this situation, we need to do it.
And also, just so you know, like, I don't think they're starving for money to make this happen, but it, the whole point of it is for the Olive Osman Hearing Foundation. And they do provide hearing aids to hearing impaired, in many cases, children that would no, not otherwise have access to hearing aids.
Yeah, you had to throw the kid thing in there, didn't you?
Well, I mean, I have a nephew who's profoundly hearing impaired, and it's been, because it, you know, it's been a big issue to his whole life.
Well, I'll make a motion to give the Pioneer Heritage Production twenty-five hundred dollars for this year.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Okay, so, um, I can, I can add that in, like, we already did have the public hearing on the budget, I can add it in. Um, it's in the same meeting, and we're not voting on the budget till next time. Um, we can add it in with an amendment to next year's budget, or we can spend it out of, um, sundry, and if we go over, then we can, we can adopt it. Let's, how much, you said twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-five hundred.
Okay, let's not, let's not worry about monkeying with the budget then, for that.
They need it now, don't they?
Yeah, no, I'm saying, we have the wiggle room in sundry.
Right.
We'll just, we'll just plan on bumping that up next year, if we're going to continue it next year.
Should I state, I have a conflict, because I have a nephew who's hearing impaired?
No.
Okay, I just realized.
Well, you can state a conflict if you want, but that's not probably required.
And you don't vote anyway, oh, true.
You didn't vote, yeah.
Okay, well, there you go. All right, now we are going to move into our work meeting. So item twelve is the airport lease agreement, has everyone had a chance to look at the airport lease agreement?
So I need to talk about this one though, because, um, there, there wasn't anything, there wasn't anything in the packet, right? Good, good.
Nobody's seen it.
The reason why, the re, no, we're not ready to consider the lease agreement, we're, I, the reason I wanted this on the work meeting is because I want to have the council consider an idea that we have gotten to with Airport Board. That they, they, meaning those on the Airport Board that do have a conflict of interest, that do have hangar leases, and they've, they've declared their conflict, but, um, we've, we've gone around and around with the airport lease agreement. Um, sorry, what we're really talking about is the new template that we're going to use. However, we have been planning that when the airport leases come due, and they're not able to be extended at their own option, but we have to mutually agree to extend them, we were going to sign, have them sign the new agreement template, which is a robust, a legally robust, um, airport lease agreement, ground lease agreement. Some of these have agreements that were signed way back when the airport was created, it's a very simple lease agreement. It doesn't have a lot of legal teeth, it doesn't have a lot of, it's not really in twenty-twenty-four's time, when everybody has a lawyer on speed dial, and the FAA has a whole bunch of requirements. Frankly, it kind of leaves the city legally exposed, that we can't really sufficiently run our airport very well. So the whole process was to migrate everybody to the new lease agreement as their current agreements expire. And any new leases that get signed in the future, we would have a better agreement to use. Still, it has been really, there's been a lot of friction. Um, Councilman Harris was there for the last one, but we've been going around and around with them for quite some time. Um, they've said, we've got a problem with this, so we look at it and say, yeah, we probably don't need that, we can probably soften that language up. That paragraph, that's lawyer mumbo jumbo, let's just delete it. This one here, no, we really need to have that, that's FAA rules, that we need to have, this is what you can do in the, in the hangar, and this is what you can't do on the airport. Sorry, that needs to stay, we got that straight from the FAA language, we're not touching it. This has been the process now for like, eight months, Heather back there, it's been a while. Well, this is the point where we're at, we've, we've kind of got to a point where we boiled it down to the things that the city's willing to live with. We have some of the airport hangar owners, some of which are on the Airport Board, that are like, we still do not want to re-sign with this agreement. There's the really old agreements, then there's agreements that were signed as recently as two thousand one, two thousand twenty, they're, it's a better agreement. It definitely is a lot better, and in a roundabout way accomplishes most of what we want to accomplish. Their proposal was, if you don't make us, anybody that has a, kind of a recent agreement that's better than the old ones, if you don't make us re-sign when the time comes, we'll all back off, we'll tell our attorneys not to sue the city. Because they're, they're like, some of them are ready to get their attorneys involved. Um, and they're like, we're going to be fine with it, the old, old ones, that's fine, they really need to be probably updated. Anybody that comes in and builds a new hangar, has a new agreement, is the city okay with that? Because we think everybody will be fine, and we'll all be peachy king af- after that, peachy king, that's a legal term. One last thing to consider in this whole thing. One last thing to consider in this whole thing, we're not negotiating whether or not we're going to increase rates. Everybody understands we're going to increase rates. Every one of these agreements that is in place has a provision for increasing rates. They all know, to quote somebody on the airport board, "We've been getting away with murder." "We've been paying a really, really outdated lease. We're subsidizing the airport if you don't count the economic benefit."
Did you tell them your attorney's going to sue them for that money?
Yeah. I did not, but I can definitely deliver that message.
Well, and I, I always assume everyone lives in my head and I've been looking at the agreement forever, so I don't mean to make you feel weird, but did you, did you read it? Did you have any input? Because you've been really engaged and I appreciate you. So do you have anything to add to that with your, kind of in the middle of that and listening and kind of hearing it new without any backstory?
No, like, I, I see their point, you know, there's gonna probably be some grandfathering of the old stuff, you know, for the, the old boys that have been there forever. So I, it, but the new stuff's got to change. And they're not fighting to pay more money on their lease grant. It's, everyone's-
Well, nobody wants to pay more money, but it's quite, our, our rates are really outdated. And, and most of them, we, we have the ability, most of them adjust with CPI. It's tied to CPI every year. And we have not done that, and so that they're, some of them are quite out of date and some of them are, 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 are not too bad. They were, but they were still the rates that we had way back, that we just kept with the same rate, so.
And that was, I mean, one of my first experiences as mayor was a letter I received from one of the hangar owners that said, "You've got to adjust these lease rates." And so, I mean, that, they're aware that their lease rates need to be adjusted and that isn't any part of the argument. I think walking out of that meeting, it was a good meeting and a few of the hangar owners talked to me after and said they thought we did, you know, good work and made good progress that meeting. Is if they sign the twenty-twenty-one-ish agreement, they just don't want to re-sign a brand new one. But there are these outliers that no one's really been able to nail down to get to, that are long ago, that they'd like to see those come in and, and, uh, do that. So get everybody at least on that and then anybody new, they're fine with them being on the new one.
Question, if it's not money, why don't they want to sign a new agreement?
Because it's like twenty-five pages. It goes on and on and on and on. It has a lot of language about the airport can do this, the airport can do that, the city can do this, city can do that. It's, it's a good agree, and, and by the way, the process, we looked at five different agreements that, that are more modern. Airports our size, general aviation airports in Utah, and we looked to, to build a good agreement, um.
So why aren't they wanting to sign that one?
They feel like it's overstepping in its, um, really, uh, city-centric contract that is really heavy-handed.
Well, it belongs to the city.
And we, I know.
Well, if I could, if I could interject, a few meetings that I've been in, one, I wanted to compliment Dan because he treated everybody with great respect and, and he also acknowledged the equities that they had, whether new or, or historical, uh, lessies of, at the airport. Uh, but in the same breath, I thought that was very impressive is giving his and my aviation background, um, which, which isn't much. Uh, brought in experts and people that know about these things and people that are pilots, active and former and people that have, uh, uh, signed these leases. And, um, you know, frankly, like he said, we looked at a whole number of, of different approaches. And I thought the hybrid that was drafted was, was very reasonable for whatever that's worth. So that's a great question, is if it's not the money, what is it? And, and, uh, I, I didn't see anything in there that was overreaching. Did you, Dan? I mean?
No, and there was a few things that I, that was like, "At the city's sole discretion, this, at the city's sole discretion, that." And I'm like, "At the end of the day, this is the city's airport," you know, but, but they're investing a lot of money to build a hangar. And in a lot of cases, they have a twenty-year or a thirty-year mortgage on it. And so they're like, "You can't just come busting in here if you think I might be doing something illegal." Well, yeah, actually, we can. We'll give you notice unless it's an emergency. But we don't like that it says that it's really heavy-handed, right? And so, and I reminded them, "Listen, this protects one hangar owner from a bad actor that's a neighbor, that's a, that's a hangar owner as well." And they're like, "Great, we've been partners with the city for all these years and if you're going to have new people moving in from out of town that you don't know who they are, have them have a good, strong agreement." But we've been, it's got to count for something, the fact that we've been, we've had hangars here for a long time, have been good partners with the city. We're not acting badly. Now, there are some that even hangar owners complained to me about other hangar owners. They're not, they're not even using it for airport stuff. They don't have a plane in there. They're not doing this and that. We, at least reading through the agreement, this twenty-twenty-one, it does reference FAA rules and law and says that the city has the ability to enforce that. But it doesn't specifically say, but the fact that it does point to the FAA law, we can say, "Listen, in your agreement that you signed in twenty-twenty, it says that you will follow these FAA rules." It doesn't detail them, but then we can say, "These are the FAA rules. You have to follow them." That was where I started to say, "Okay, we might could live with that." And by the way, we were never going to just say, "Your existing contract is in the trash." It was, "When your existing contract comes due and then we will substitute it with the new one." They still are adamant that they want to fight it till the, till the bitter end.
Yeah.
So you guys can do what you want. At the end of the day, airport board is a recommending board, a recommending body. Um, but, but they're the export, they're the experts in airport, in the airport, which is why we have them on there. They just, not all, but three of, on the airport board happen to be, have hangar, they're hangar owners and they do have a conflict. But they represent the majority of the hangar owners that are there in their statements.
So the purpose of this discussion is to kind of, I get the council up to speed, but then we'll bring something to action that this would be what we would do.
Well, really what I'm getting at is if you're willing to entertain that, that we let alone the ones that have recently signed with an agreement that's better than the oldest one and we leave them alone, the resistance to this will go away. We will adopt it in the next airport board. We won't adopt it. They'll make a favorable recommendation after stating their conflicts and we'll bring it here and we'll say, "Yep, this is our new template." This whole thing was really about transparency. The city, we could have the attorney say, "Here's a new contract I recommend you sign." We didn't have to go through this whole thing. We didn't have to do any of this. We really wanted to, to, to work with the airport, uh, ground lease and, and, because when the time comes due, they say, "We don't like this." We say, "Well, this is the new template that we'd like to use." But we went through this very public, very painful process because we wanted to be good partners with our partners that are out there.
How long are those contracts good for?
Well, they're at all different stages because they were signed at all different times. Some of them were five-year, ten-year. Some of them, one of them literally has no, it just-
Ones of, ones-
It just gets to renew at their option in perpetuity.
There's one that's in perpetuity?
It doesn't mention, uh, that it ever ends. They just get to renew it automatically. That one is a, frankly, is a concern because that, at that point-
Yeah, I think.
It's not a lease. It's like they own it.
Yeah.
But yet, it's the city's property, you know? What happens if they don't pay their taxes and it's, then the tax, the assessor wants to do a tax sale on it, you know? That's a problem. We, we should never have an agreement that does not expire and give the city the opportunity to say, "We are not willing to continue this anymore." We may want to reconfigure the airport, put a runway that goes this direction or s-, you know, I'm joking, but, you know, there's a reason. It's the city property, but, but it is a lease. It, and it, anyways, I'm, I'm babbling now and making our meeting long.
And I think also, it was mentioned to me, it was, why did it have to be so long? Why was it so many pages? And I think you did work to kind of shorten it, but in, at the end of the day, I think it was more that they had recently signed a contract and they wanted consideration for the contracts they had so recently signed. And I think we're in a really good place after, after that meeting, depending on, you know, how the council feels.
Publics can receive contributions, monies from government entities. You just have to make sure that the recipient is a valid five oh one C three, and I'm sure they are, so we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
No. Does any of the coun, do any of you have any questions about, um, this item on the agenda? The airport lease agreement or anything that you would want us to find out between now and a meeting, probably the next meeting where we put on the agenda to approve that direction?
Um, if you guys are okay with considering that, we'll just stop our, because we have it to a pretty good spot where it's at. In fact, we were to the point where I didn't think we were willing to really make any more edits on that. If we're not going to insist that when only the oldest ones come due, that we change the ones that are formatted with that old contract, then, then we're ready to bring it forward after the airport board makes a recommendation next time, which is the first of the next month. So probably by the next city council, it would be be, ready to come back to you guys and we'll do that.
Think you need to look at that in perpetuity.
Yeah, we need to look at that one. We do. It's only really a problem when we need, we need the property. But, you know, as long as we're adjusting the rates or if the building itself becomes run down to the point where it has to be, you know, condemned or rebuilt or something, at that point, I would say we would have to reissue something. Anyways, it's a problem, but.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, we're going to move to reports, updates, old business follow-up, and we will start with Councilmember Burton.
Well, the interest of time, get the mayor out of here. We had the-
I'm okay. I have my seat saved. We're good.
Planning and zoning, and I think we pretty much covered everything that, I mean, the, they did five, uh, public hearings. And, uh, the ones came, you voted on the, the, uh, oh, gosh. The zone change and, uh, the, uh, water conservation, the others, they're still going to work on, right, Larry? I think those are the only two.
There were a couple that were approved that need to come to the city council. They just didn't make it on this agenda.
Oh, yeah, that's right. And so I guess that one was with the changing the ordinance that if it's not specified, it's not authorized or something. Yeah.
And we did get somewhere on-
Your mic on?
Thank you. Can I use yours?
You better.
There you go.
We did get somewhere on the definitions though. Yeah, um, would we be approving that as a council, the definitions?
Right, so we've had a couple sets of definitions now. We had a, I call it the early set. And we went through and made a, reviewed those and made a positive recommend. But we're holding those and not sending them to the council yet because they, a lot of them have to do specifically with accessory dwelling unit code. And so we just don't want to send them forward and without having the code ready so people can kind of see where they're used. And so in this last public hearing, yes, we, we did have a second set. We approved those for recommendation. So you'll see just a bigger set come in at some point.
Okay.
And really, that was, that was pretty much it for public hearings. Everything else is kind of down in the weeds, so, thank you.
So the three that will move forward are, are there two or three that will move forward to our next council meeting?
Well, the ne, the next council meeting, we would hope to see the, uh, structures and uses prohibited in zones language come before you. And then really, well, at some point, we want to see the master transportation plan come forward. So those would really be the only other two that you'll see shortly. The definitions would be the third one and it'll be, it won't be the next meeting.
Okay, right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Maybe rather than do a bunch of stuff at the end, let me add to that, um, we have started with subdivisions, um, that, that work with, Mike Hansen had a meeting this last week with him. Um, so that's, well, that's starting.
It has to be done by the end of the year.
Or the, those that were there last night at league training, they learned a lot about it. So we had Councilmember Burton and Councilmember Toppam there. And we also had Troy Hoyt from planning and zoning and Keith, um, was also there, Naylor. So we had a good group from Parowan and we specifically had a breakout class on this topic. And Mike Hansen was on the top of the list for who to use and the people in the room that had used him said they had a, a great process with that. And I actually got a follow-up email from Rob Dotson from ENEC and he said, "Once you get moving on this, this is going to make your process so much easier." So, but we don't need a comment from Councilmember Burton on that.
Yeah, I gave it last night. Okay. The, the kids, the high school kids, they did a good job, John, I'm sure we'll expound on that, on the cleanup and the parks and things. It was a good, what was it, a week ago, last Monday?
Yeah.
Something, okay. And then the, I, my last, um, understanding is that the pool will open Monday is what they're shooting for. Dan, I'm sure he'll expand on that.
You want me to expound right now?
I don't care.
Yeah. Okay, so just, whoa, it's through my mouth. Um, I have some, some pictures.
He's so excited.
We got some signs going up. We put the, um, the, the little signs there on the, oh, we have a door. Now it has a little gas meter sign on it. It's for the gas company. The gas company is happy.
Yeah.
Um, we have the heater up, up and running. Um, we have added a door with their padlock and it says, "Gas Meter Room", so that they have their own twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five access, um, there. And gas is on, heater's up, pool is up to temperature. It, it came up in, in two days. Took us four last time, but we weren't putting the covers on it, so everything's running good.
Eighty-six degrees, right, Mayor?
I went and put my hand in it and said, "Um, I think this is a little warmer."
It's probably a little warm.
And then David Burton said, "I think it's probably about seventy-five." Pulled the thermometer out. It was eighty-six degrees. I wanted to get in there so bad.
What about the health department? Have they come out yet?
Health department has given us the go.
Oh, good.
They are going to come out next Wednesday, but they've given us the approval to open. They're going to come, we've done everything on the checklist that they had.
Good.
Um, we don't anticipate any problems with them. Um, Troy Catwick is up there installing the gates as we speak. I left him there to come here. And he got, he took all the gates off, went and fixed them, modified them. We, we put crash bars on the egress. The, uh, two of them will sound with an emergency if they are used and it says, "Emergency exit only." There's a put, single push bar. And it, it goes out. The one right by the, the front door, um, does not have an alarm on it, but the gar, lifeguards are right there and, and kids can use egress all day long and, and parents and things like that. It is a heavier duty that we'll stand up to all day, every day. He ported the, the whole, poured new cement there for the, for that gate, so it should be good. Fixed the main gate so that they're not just swinging with chain. And anyways, lot of upgrades there. It's nice. Um, he had the heater serviced. They said it was really clean and looked great. Um, we swapped out a whole bunch of, all new valves inside the, the box. We got the, the venting all rigged up to a, rigged, sounds bad. We had Marshall and Evans come install a, a thing that kicks on. Well, I'm a farmer, so when I say rigged, be fair.
I've been in Bayou County all day, so I was right there with you.
By a licensed local contractor.
It was appropriately rigged correctly so that when they-
No baling wire.
Certain level, it kicks on and vents the, the, the pump room, plus you can override it if you want to clean out, um, smells. We're getting a vented door on that so that there's good pass-through. Um, and, uh, put soap dispensers in the showers, all kinds of little details. There's a million of them. I won't go into every last one, but we've been doing a lot of work. The reason I brought up pictures is because I have an exciting one for you here. We did put up the new, the signs, the gals and guys' signs, inside and outside.
Which between Danny and I, we decided to do the, um, imagery correct, you know, just because some little kids can't read.
Yeah, hopefully we don't get sued for-
Hopefully we don't get sued, but I want little kids that couldn't read to know which one to go into.
We do not have chain-linked gates. Those were just temporary while he was powder coating the new gates that he was fabricating. Um, that's what I wanted to know.
That's what I love. I love this. This is like a class. And if you'll notice, it's been, the wood's been sealed.
I was gonna say, thank you to Jed, so we went and sealed the wood. I was waiting for that to dry to put up that sign.
I love it, like, love it, love it.
Very nice.
And so we're excited. That's all aluminum. That whole sign is aluminum. And, um, Danny Catwick made the signs. We have one large one and we have five small ones. We'll put, we'll put them on the gate, on the fences in some places, so as you drive around, it's really well-branded. And we may put one on the front. We may put one on one of the, um, the gables of the, of the, anyways, we'll figure out the best place to put those so that it really shows off the pool.
And what, how did we, Stephen helped us design it, but what's that, uh, what is that similar?
This is actually the Valentine Peak, um, mountain range, and that's Valentine Peak. That's from that perspective.
From the pool.
That's the, that was the- That's the, that was the idea, is that you had a Valentine Peak there and-
When you stand there and you look at Valentine Peak, you'll see the same, you'll see the same, what do you call that? Horizon? Summit line?
The same silhouette, yeah.
Silhouette.
So, um, we thought this would be really cool to have the established nineteen sixty-four on there.
I like it.
Oh, no!
Established in, what's that, nineteen sixty-four?
Yeah.
Reestablished twenty twenty-four.
I know.
So, and the mayor has an announcement on that, so-
Well, I wanted to do that, but then I thought it might be.
We were gonna do that, but then we decided to do a plaque.
Yeah.
And, and list everybody that had helped and volunteered and spent time. Um, so that's the update on the bill.
Twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, twenty twenty-three. That's right.
Yeah.
And on my memories, I had a p- a photo pop up that said, a year ago today, and it was just Armageddon. Concrete broken everywhere. The build, everything just destroyed. I'm like, that was one year ago today, isn't that correct, league?
We were looking at that.
We were g- we're gonna do, um, uh, an opening on Monday. We're, we're having lifeguards doing literally testing in the pool on Saturday. Um, it's, it's been a, it's been a minor Herculean effort to get it open with getting everything up to where the health department wanted it. We still have a lot of work to do in the facility, especially in the concession area, um, and, and we've been, I met with, um, some people that have done a lot of concessions and working through what we're gonna offer down the contract with that, so, I'm excited about that. But that's the pool update. I'll turn it back over. Was it Dave?
Yeah. Yeah, just, uh, from historic preservation, the Fremont Monument has been cleaned, and then everybody ought to go look at that. The plaque looks wonderful, and you need to look at that to see it in comparison to what we could do with some of the others, but it really is good. And then, don't forget Memorial Day program Monday at the cemetery. Ten o'clock, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
How does it look out there?
Beautiful.
Looks beautiful.
Looks great. That cemetery really looks good. And I haven't heard, they were gonna, I don't know, they were gonna try and do that big reef, but then they had some issues, so I don't know if they're gonna get that done for the memorial that we talked about, like the one we had for Christmas, so, anyway. Uh, that's all I have. Let's move on, cause John will have plenty to say about Monday.
Yeah, and I don't have anything to report, so we'll let John go.
Just at the pool, just come out. Hot dogs.
Nice.
John's gonna serve hot dogs.
Just a little more than just hot dogs. First, he's gonna be in a really cool outfit.
I was just gonna say, can you elaborate on your outfit?
Oh, no, that was, okay. No, no, no.
Oh, come on. I wanted to match your energy and wear a really cool outfit fit next to you.
Well-
It's blue with pink flamingos, matching, matching set.
I know. Matching shorts and, well, it was a joke sent to me at Christmas time from my old crew back in Texas, and ah, ah.
I still think he could, should do it.
Oh, maybe.
With a straw hat.
Ah, ah.
With a straw hat.
Let's take a poll on Facebook if he should do it or not.
Oh, no.
Okay.
We can make a motion, can't we?
Uh, and then, just a big shout-out to the high school seniors, you know, cleaning up the park and stuff. We had, I mean, I, I was just amazed how much stuff we got thrown away. So it was a good, good, uh, hour and a half. They, they just killed it throughout the whole city, so, I, yeah. So looking forward to Monday, so come on out, you know, and, uh, have a hot dog. Uh, one o'clock. One o'clock on Monday.
Yeah, it'll be open Monday, and then close Tuesday, and then we'll resume normal hours Wednesday on. We're just short-staffed. We only have the lifeguards that carried over from last year, and so, anyways.
And then the new group that's getting certified on Sunday.
One to six on Monday. She's gonna, we're gonna do a post on Facebook and, and, and update the webpage and all that stuff.
Okay.
And they are taking reservations.
Yep.
For, yeah.
And that's it for me, cause, um, graduation's in, uh, twenty-seven minutes.
Hey, crap. You know, I'll just get up and walk out. It got scary.
I have nothing.
Okay, I'll make this really quick. Um, there was a theater board meeting last week. I wasn't able to attend to, because I had a family man, a family matter. Um, but they heard a, a proposal from a new director that wants to do a play, and they just talked about cleaning out the connects boxes. And that was about it. Um, I did get to attend the five-county regional event last night, which I told them thank you for, for the league, for putting these on in the evening for those of us that have to work during the day, so it was nice to see that. Um, learned a lot about the subdivision thing. Did not realize that it was so complex, so hats off to everybody who is involved in that. I had no idea that it was that crazy, but got a lot of good information. Um, the school would like to know, or to keep on the top of our priority, if we're going to do the arms or not for the opening and closing of the one-way street. I don't know what our plan is or what, but they-
Well, we-
Asked me about that today.
We decided that we were going to do that, right?
So they're-
We were gonna build new ones from scratch.
Okay. They're just hoping that we could possibly do that before school resumes again in August.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, no, that's, that's definitely the plan.
Okay, okay.
We decided, the council decided that, that we were gonna continue with that, right?
Yes, we did.
We, we thought about ta- taking some other ones that were somewhere else and modifying them. It, it's actually, it'll be easier just to build some new ones. They're not that, they're not that complex of a thing to build.
Okay.
So we'll just fabricate some and put them in there. Um, the, these are the-
Like, they're like the arms, kinda like-
The swinging gates that close the road there on one hundred, two hundred, two hundred west.
I think it's two.
It's like, it's piled on six hundred west at the crossing of water.
Like at that crossing, yeah.
Those were just built by city staff. They weren't, right?
They just didn't want us to forget.
Oh.
And I was like, I, nobody's gonna forget.
Did you know the update on the mailbox thing? Do you know that?
No.
Okay.
No, I do not.
Okay, and that's all I've got.
In the interest of time, I'm not gonna do my usual update on everything, other than to say, the recharge project, we have been actively meeting, very actively with a big group, working through with our engineers. We'll get it to a point where we have the routes finalized of what the plan is, and we wanna, we wanna, um, update the public on it. We'll, we'll, we'll come and do a presentation, invite the public, um, so everybody kinda knows what, what's going on. It will involve, um, tearing up some streets as we build this, um, and, and getting that repaired and replaced. Um, kind of a, it's a big deal, big project. It'll affect, you know, some people slightly and others a little bit more. Um, and so, anyways, we just wanna, we'll, we'll be transparent to the public, but we've gotta, we brought it right now, they'd say, well, what are you doing? We'd say, well, we're working on it. You know, when we actually have, um, the best information, there's a lot of utilities. It's kinda hard to run a thirty-six inch pipe that needs to be gravity flow. It's like a thirty, it's almost like running a thirty-six inch sewer line in, in terms of complexity, and, and both routes have a lot of conflicts with utilities. High-pressure gas line on both ends, water, sewer, many water lines, multiple sewer lines, of course, all of the other utilities. It's, it's a very complex project, but it is moving very well. Um, we did go on a field trip this, this last week to go look at several diversions that have been done by the engineer, alpha engineering. And we also looked at one out by Quichapah that the, wh- Iron County Conservancy District installed. We've gotta get the, 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 um, diversion structure itself right. We don't have, they gave us a price on one component, if they went a certain route, one component. This, uh, an aluminum gate, twelve by twelve, which would open and close, a million dollars for the gate and the hydraulics to run it. We were hoping to not spend a million dollars on the whole diversion structure, including concrete and excavation and all that. So, we're gonna probably not use that, that option, but we need it to work well. So we're looking at different options. We, we went to a, to loo- view a couple of others, and they had some other stuff that would probably work better, so. Anyways, that's moving along really well. Um, the Main Street Bridge, um, project, uh, we're meeting with, um, there's, well, there's a, as many as eight engineering firms that could, um, potentially be selected by the selection committee. Um, we had, we had interviews this last week with five of them. One of them pulled out, so we had interviews with four. Um, doesn't mean that other a, uh, there's at least one other firm, Jones and DeMille, who could potentially bid on it. They didn't choose to have an interview, but they already know it because they did feasibility studies. I don't know whether they'll put in for it or not. But when we get that engineer firm selected, we'll start moving forward with the rest of it. Um, right-of-way acquisition is a, is a very, is a, is one thing that could be a challenge. Deepening that channel is, is, it's the holy grail of making that work on Main Street. But that's gonna be a big project itself. We, and, and that's not gon- there's no grant money that's gonna pay for that. Um, anytime you deepen a channel, you have to worry about widening it, uh, because you have to maintain your slopes. You can't just go deep. It has to still be sloped correctly, and then you have to worry about things like erosion and, and make sure we get in and riprap it and do all that work. The grant will not pay for any of that. So, um, there's, the utility conflicts are gonna be a big challenge. Because it's federal money and state money, you have to go through all of the, whatever, when, when, when they look at, when these engineers look at it and say, wait, a two-year window, and we have to be done with engineering within a year, they're like, why such a short timeframe? That's incredibly short. And it is, for a federal project, of all the hoops you have to jump through. Um, but we, but we've, we're gonna try to stick to a best-case scenario. The whole team, UDOT, and everybody that's on board realizes it's aggressive, and they still think we're gonna push and try and get there. The reason we're pushing is cause we wanna have it being built in the winter of twenty-five, twenty-six. If we don't, we have to wait for low flows and build it in the winter of twenty-six, twenty-seven. We really don't wanna wait that long. Um, every year you wait, inflation goes up, right? Anyways, that's the Main Street Bridge project. That's a lot. We're, we're just doing everything else. I won't go into everything else that's happening, but that's my update.
We were at our meeting last night, and they had the Panguich Dam story, and we walked up, and we were visiting with, what was his name, Rochelle, Councilmember Dodd's?
Mr. Dodd's.
And he said, I bet you're so glad you, you're not moving your bridge. I was like, okay, that's a weird thing, coming in conversation. So he was on the joint highways committee, or he is on the joint highways committee.
Yeah.
And he said, they were all so relieved we weren't gonna-
They're always holding our breath when that bridge come, talk comes up, and I was like, you're holding your breath.
Now we've decided to move it. Everybody is coming out of the weeds. Yeah, that was the worst idea to move it. I'm like, well, why didn't you say that before?
Why didn't you help us? Anyway, this is quick. Um, I got finally, I, I mean, of, of course, you're always like, what am I gonna get to do that might be fun for being a mayor? I got to ride on the, don't be jealous, it was a moment in time. Would've invited you, but it truly was a moment in time. I got to ride on the, the big, the big bucket, whatever you call it, the lift.
What? You got to do heavy machinery?
And I got to go all the way to the top where the belfry is and inspect the belfry. It was really cool. Um, so that was like mayor, mayor perk moment, where I was like, oh. I, they, I said, do I need to sign anything? They're like, no. And the other thing is the field trip was really cool. I was surprised Councilmember Burton didn't talk about it, cause it was really cool. I said, whoever would've thought we'd have diversion structure ending?
Dan can always talk better than me.
Yeah, it was cool. We saw a lot of things to work with, and I really do feel like we are, we're in really good hands. Um, the flag, so it was Tony Robinson is who our principal told me has really been pushing this forward, but to get the place to bring flags that need to be properly handled, um, they found their mailbox. So, they're gonna design a wrap for that and place it somewhere, um, we're gonna have to figure out as a group where we would like that, like to, that to go, but it's cool. Um, other than that, we're gonna go to graduation, so-
Yes.
If, you don't have anything, or Kelly, you don't have anything, or you don't have anything?
Kelly, do you?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, you guys. Thank you. We're out.
Oh, my goodness, Larry. We forgot to talk about the library, and Larry's done so much work at the library, Dan. He was there painting last night.
We'll talk about it next time.
He's been doing the sheet rock and the painting. I was gonna do a shout-out, too. I saw Jed Out in the World today and said, is you, are you gonna be working on it again? So, anyway, I don't know if you're done. If you're done, I need to pick up, because you've done so much. I'm leaving. I know, my family would be like, you're a horrible person.
Go, run.
Bye.
We're trying to graduate tonight, aren't we?
Bye. Bye, now.
Go.
Oh, that's right, we got you.